A meeting to order. I guess this is kind of our, you have any outstanding items? Before you let Gina and I hammer th- things together over the week. To present on. Day, okay, next Monday. Now, we talked a little bit about. The Department of Public Works position. Part of the issue is. In. Projecting savings, it's easier to project costs. Because you can anticipate, okay, this guy is gonna cost this much to pay, this much to insure, this much to do health insurance. With. You know, savings. It kind of becomes the question. Well, are you gonna need, how much less of this contracting are you gonna need? Yeah, you might do more, might do less co- hauling for the dump, but do you still need some of that, do you cover? So, we don't have any hard numbers for you on that. It's just one of those things where. Maybe it makes sense to. Plan for implementing the position. And. As you work through it, you accept costs and figure out more thing or accept savings and look for more as you go through.
I definitely agree with you on that, you know, that it's certainly easier to. Okay, how much is this gonna cost us? Um, and often where those savings come in, sometimes it takes a little bit, a few iterations to figure out where that comes in. But I know where we left off and we chatted last Thursday, I think.
Yes.
Uh, I know we were kind of, you know. Certainly it's gonna push. You know, cost up, right, if we, but you know, in, in conversations, you know. Thursday, you know, and even conversations with, you know, uh, people from Public Works. It almost seems that where we're kind of encountering is an investment needs to be made into Public Works. You know, for a couple of reasons, one, you know, even before Walt was retiring, you know, we, we were already kind of witnessing. Um, the thinness, you know, of Public Works. Um, so I'm certainly of the persuasion that, you know, if the cost is gonna be there, I think one thing that the way that I look at it, it's kind of. An investment in that department, you know, also for continuity, you know, so like the age, you know, like. I, I don't wanna call it the ages, you know, but it's probably like fifty plus. So, one thing that, you know, um. That the Bowman report kind of provided, you know, us, you know, and I kind of mentioned this, you know, i- in the past that. It's not a criticism really against Public Works, you know, but one thing that kind of came out was that they're more reactive than proactive. So, again, that kind of indicates to me that two things, one, that we could probably make some sort of investment, you know, in there, you know, if it's a one full-time position. But I also think that what's lacking within there, and again, it's nothing to how Walt ran the department or anything like that. But. One thing that I think was lacking was like certain like performance metrics, and, and again, like not to say that they're not doing their job or anything like that. But maybe one thing, if we go with the one full-time position, again, we kind of think about, you know, what sort of feedback can we have? That then kind of tells us what state are they in, are, are they being spread too thin? Or even it could be an optimization of the hours, you know, what are you doing throughout the day, you know, what takes four hours, what takes? So then there can be this better, um, you know, optimization of, okay. Six hours they're doing this, they have this span of two hours, maybe we can chunk that and they can do some sort of. So, I, I, I'm certainly in support of, of. Giving strength to, you know, I, I, I think one perhaps would be, uh. And, and I know there would be costs associated with that, but again, the way that I see it again is, I think one thing that we also need to think about is investment in our, you know, departments here.
Sure.
Particularly with, you know, again, what happened last year with the snow contractors, you know, I don't think we ever wanna be in a place where. They feel stretched too thin. But again, you know, in doing that, I think certain things all have to go into place, again, it's kind of like, what are these metric, you know, okay, we just measure something.
And we can work with a new.
Yeah, so.
Figure all that out, too.
One posi- if we go with a.
Like one full-time position.
I need to support the, the one full-time position, I think that you're right with some kind of.
Again, well, we can, you know, so when we meet next year.
The new form in there, we can understand whether that's enough, whether.
Yeah, adjust incrementally.
You know, I'm just looking at, obviously, there's a cost associated with that, is that, does that? Does there come, you know, I'm looking at the, like, as Eric's mentioned, the contractor side of that, or the contracting side of their savings to be, be.
And it's probably safe to assume that there would be.
Right, because.
It's just.
Back in the envelope, one FTE with fringe and is close to a hundred thousand dollars.
And then I also think.
Yes.
It's gonna be somewhere in that.
Maybe a little less.
Right, depending on experience level and things like that, you know, I'm looking at, you know, the contractor line right now. For budgeted request is one ten.
Or just snow plowing, or because that.
Correct.
And the thing I, so the thing I would be careful with there is simply. You don't know how much snow, I know, I know, but, um.
I understand all of that, right?
So, in kind of weighing, you know, the cost benefit, you know, it's like. Uh, uh, of course, you know, I, I would like to come in and say like, oh, that's, you know, true as much as possible, you know, like, it's our money. But, but then I, I also think, you know, if, again, if these investments aren't necessarily made, you know, what are we gonna be looking like two, three, four?
Yeah.
Years down the road, and it could be like a cliff situation, you know, where two of you are retiring and, you know. Cause certainly I think one thing, and, 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 you know, I think the point was, was made that, you know, I think having continuity is also important, too. Um, so I, I, I'm certainly, you know, open to that. Um, you know, I know the Board of Finance will kind of.
Yeah.
Run the numbers.
Kick that around a little bit, that's okay.
But at least I think from, you know, a, an executive standpoint, I, I, I think kind of. I think having that investment, I think is needed, you know, at this point.
I'm happy to hear that. Okay, well, we can add those numbers back into the budget.
But, you know, also, also going through o- other things, you know, like, um. I, you know, so one question, I just had a clarification question for you, Eric, so when, when you do these budgets, you do the BOS adjusted. We didn't, like, we didn't necessarily talk about it as a board, so I'm assuming that you and Gina were kind of in the background, working on this.
Yeah, that's kind of where that, those numbers tend to come from, so.
Which ones are referring?
So, you know, so, so the one that we got on two twenty-nine here, you know, so. I saw, you know, a BOS adjusted here for our stipends for two eighty-eight.
That's, that's, yeah.
So, like, you know.
That, that got added.
We don't need it, you know, like, we don't need that.
Yeah, exactly, then.
But, um, so, so I was just curious, cause just, it's, it's a process question, you know, I, I didn't know if we needed to like vote on this, or.
So, some of those things are the ones.
That, uh, Joel suggests.
Suggested.
Oh, okay, okay.
In there are some of the ones that.
But there wasn't clarity on the split, and so.
Okay, yeah, got it.
So, you'll go down, you'll see.
Yeah, so I have the capital budget on top.
Okay, got it, got it.
Um, we're just saying management, things like that.
Okay.
Yes.
Whether we need to go, no, no, whether we need to go vote on every one of those lines, I, I.
I don't think we need to vote on every one of those lines, um, we can just bring it up in the meeting, I can create an agenda item. For, I would like to do these things in regular meetings, just because those generally tend to be more paid attention to.
Yeah.
And so what we can do is we can say, we'll vote on the budget, we'll have a clean copy for you on Monday, well, before Monday.
Correct.
Um, for you to review.
Yeah, it'd be nice going into that meeting, whether we do that tonight, or whether we do it sort of another offline or something. To have that copy of that budget that we all.
Yeah.
Agree on, what are the changes, where are the reset, what are the adjustments?
Yeah.
Where are they, what, what do we?
Just so we're all like on the same.
And then be able to just, so, be happy to, to, you know, endorse that, or.
Yeah, you'll get a copy of that this week.
Right. And I'm, that's what I would be, you know, so right now, I think we're hearing to add. One FTE.
Yeah.
To the highway, I. It's fine, are we still okay with? The trooper, you know, needing a second trooper?
No robo-rich.
Yeah.
Okay, look, that's how I've been referring to all the new positions.
As long as.
Noble robo, Debbie, no robo.
You know, when it comes. Well, when, when it comes to, to, you know, the, the trooper, like, I, 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 I understand, you know, speeding is a big concern for a lot of the residents, right, you know, and. Like, particularly, you know, I mean, I, I live in a cul-de-sac, but you know, if I lived on, you know, a main road, you know, I, yeah, I, I would be a little bit more. But I, I don't know if having a second trooper really is the answer.
Yeah, to solve that.
To that.
Correct.
So, I would be concerned, here we have another trooper, you know, and it's like.
Yeah.
We're not.
I, I, I agree, I threw, part of the reasoning for putting that in there was. What would it cost to have a trooper if, you know? So that we were aware, and then if people, you know, ask, what's the cost benefit, well, we can say it's another quarter of a mil or.
And, and crime is relatively low. You know, here, I mean, I know it's like, you know, you'll get some break-ins in cars and people leave their kids in there, like, I, you know, I, I understand that, but.
As far as violent crime is concerned, it's minimal.
And I know we've had discussions in prior, you know, board selection meetings where it's like other, other solutions, and I, I think there are probably other low-cost solutions that we can implement first.
And I reached out just on, as an aside on that, to T2, which is the. Local traffic authority organization to schedule a meeting for talking about road safety audits and.
Mm-hmm.
More speed spies.
Yeah.
That hopefully don't get cut and run over.
You know, I mean, I, I did just think of like West Hartford, you know, and I, I don't know if I necessarily ever wanna be in a place where we have to install.
No.
I, I mean, but, but I mean, how effective probably like is that, you know, like one ticket and you're probably done, but anyway.
So, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um. There was some other amendments on there.
Yeah, um, just to quickly go through them.
Yeah, like, like I said, you know, I mean, at least for me, I mean, i- if you have a.
I don't have, we.
You know, I, for, you know, the salary, I don't, you know.
We don't need a salary, we just got the job.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not how this works.
You know, I appreciate it, like, I, you know, I really do, you know, but I, you know.
We don't need a salary.
Okay, yeah, that adjustment has already been made in the background.
But we did sort of play for all of those other salary adjustment. You know, requests that we've heard, you know, I. I thought some of the fairest operating was kind of what was the fair, right, with ground rules, what was the, you know, the union negotiations on the table, where did they end up or about end up? And I think by and large, they kind of ended up around two point eight.
Yeah.
Um, and I know.
Which is kind of like a standard.
More than that in these days, and I get that, I fully get that, um, but I just thought for all of them, just fairness for consistency. Um, across the board, besides us three. Just a two point eight.
You know, like, one that I, 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 I did have kind of, you know, a, a question on was, uh, the building official salary.
Cause that came up the other, yeah, yep.
So, like, you know, I, I, I'm still a little bit, you know, so with the assessor situation, you know, even though like I heard from them. You know, I'm still a little bit, you know, unsure of really what these numbers kind of mean. Um, like, you know, I, I know there's reorganization, like, I, I didn't really have, you know, yeah, they kind of told us, but I didn't really have the context.
Yep.
So, in a way, I'm almost kind of leaning on Board of Finance to kind of like really assess, like, is this valid, does this work? But at least with the building official, you know, kind of the way that I see it was, if you kind of run a little bit of the math, you know, so at fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. That is fifty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, at nineteen hours, you know, so part-time.
Yeah.
You double that, you know, you're over six figures, you know, so a building official in K-Town. Making six figures if you were full-time, it kind of seems.
Yeah.
A lot, so if you, so almost the way that I kind of see it, you know, if you go with a more reasonable, you know, like forty-five dollars an hour. Um, which I think is more kind of on par of what like a part-time building assessor would be. Um, and, you know, maybe Richard, if you can, you know, I mean, I, I know you have a little bit more experience with this, but if you run the math at forty-five dollars an hour. It really, it brings you closer to the forty thousand.
Excuse me, this is Gina, um, you, you're talking about the building official compensation? It's, you, use the word assessor, you mean the building official, correct?
Yeah, we're talking about the building official.
He's at, he's at. What is he at?
He's at fifty, I think.
I'm gonna double check that, but I think that he is, so we just.
Yeah, we can't change the contract after you sign, it's a lower than.
I see.
So, it's mandatory, evening fifty, we're going.
I see, okay.
Yeah, we can't, we can't kind of pay, and that's kind of why I was like, oh, okay.
So, fifty-five is a.
But I just kind of wanna flag that piece, you know, that.
And it's something that brought to my attention today.
Maybe there wasn't a raise since two thousand, I don't know if that's the case, but it sounds like it's.
I think he's fairly new, too, I think he was appointed.
Yeah, he was appointed last year.
He was appointed last year.
Yes.
At fifty.
Yes.
I see.
I'm most doubtful, like, so if he was appointed last year, he's been doing a. Good job?
But he has been doing the job, yes.
Is he, is he just doing evenings, right, like, from what I understand?
He's doing hours, evenings, um, sometime on the weekends.
Okay.
Um.
So, Gina, d- 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 did he have a contract that he signed in, is that fifty dollars an hour?
Once he's appointed, I believe he's, we're contractually bound to leave him in place. Um, but, but for a certain period of time, I mean, he takes his direction from the state, from what I understand. I don't know if we're bound by the rate, but yes, I'm confirming right now, yes, he's at fifty dollars an hour.
For how long, what's the length of that contract?
Four years.
It's a four-year contract at fifty? Four years.
Oh, no, no, it's just the appointment is four years, that's the, the rate. Not part of the contract.
So, the rate is not part of the contract?
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I just wanted to bring that to.
Neither, I would be comfortable either, because he just got appointed last year, so that's still, he signed that contract, so I think fifty is a. Reasonable number for something like killing worth the building official. Um, if anything, I can, I can be persuaded just to put him, just for fairness and consistency, sort of with the rest of the.
The two point eight.
Two point eight.
Yeah.
And that's like, just like everyone else.
Right.
I've got, excuse me, I've got a note here that says he was appointed June first, twenty twenty-three, and I wrote expires six, one, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, okay.
So, it's a year that, it's a, be a year out, so two point eight seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Hey, look.
Right?
I, I'm not arguing that point at all.
Okay.
You know, especially since, you know, the others, you know, like Michelle Noon, you know, kind of requesting, you know, it's kind of like.
Yeah.
And there's been a history with that as well, which.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Has been, it's been a sore spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Throughout the town.
Yeah, then, I, I.
So, you know, we're, we're given, you know, the, you know, forty-eight percent, you know, increase here, you know, if you're just looking at the percent, you're like, ooh, you're like, whoa, you know, so, but, you know, I, I.
Can I interrupt for, can I interrupt for six?
Yes, please.
You really need to take a look at actuals in this case, uh, and I, I'll, I provide you with that, uh, uh, that information electronically, but when they set the budget. It was not, um, it was not, it, we, we, we were in the, sort of in a state of flux. So, you're, you're, you're not, it, it, it doesn't, it's not logical to look at, there's just the numbers you're getting from the budget exhibits. You have to look at some of the actuals that are happening right now. I will, uh, take his year-to-date information, I'll, I'll, uh, get it out to you, so you can see. But it's because he's paid hourly, it's not, it's not, just because it's budgeted a certain mean, doesn't mean it's paid out that way.
Sure, sure.
I think I just muddied the waters, but wait, wait, reserve judgment till you see what I send you.
Okay, yeah, so, um. I think the rate that was. The previous budget was, or the current budget we're operating under was created, had a different rate, so. That number is, the percentage increase is not necessarily accurate.
But, also with the rate, if the rate was fifty, I'd be comfortable with eight point eight percent on that, right, just like everyone else is. So, that's mileage.
Yeah, there are. Aspects to it.
I don't give a town car, but, I.
Um.
And then, you know, I, I just kind of wanted to comment on, um, you know, again, the. Committee on Aging.
Yeah.
Um, you know, with, with their request. I, I, I still think, you know, at least like they're not there yet. Um. And, you know, I, I just didn't kind of see, you know, one with the charge, you know, how that would kind of work.
Yeah.
Um. So, I'm certainly comfortable, you know, with that, you know, and just kind of.
Sure.
You know, give him another five hundred, you know, for the, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Two thousand, that's fine, but not the thirty-two thousand.
One thing that I, I would like to see.
So, hold on, let me, let me, just to, as I'm making notes here. This is one of those work, positions where we're saying we'll give them something, but we won't give them the whole thing, how much would we be comfortable with providing?
So, they requested that, so they, I think somewhere they requested.
Two thousand.
Two, so they used to have fifteen hundred for programming, they're requesting two thousand. This year, for, for programming.
Right.
So, I'm comfortable going to the two thousand for programming, but what, but without the request for the person. The thirty-one, thirty-one, five.
Okay, okay.
And I, you know, I, I, I think also similar to my logic, you know, with. Public Works and kind of o- other, you know, groups where we're kind of making decisions on.
The investment.
You know, partly of that, but, but also too, I think one thing, it's like, you know. I, I, I appreciate the survey that they did, you know, like, I, I appreciate Jones' kind of tactfulness and kind of bringing data, you know, in what are their needs, but. You know, one thing that I would really be kind of curious about, you know, is like, what would be the need, like, just to get, you know. I- if you build it, they might not necessarily come, you know, so like, I just kind of wonder, you know, really what is, you know, the, the true need, and what would you get for that thirty thousand?
Yes.
Because if you're getting something great with thirty thousand, you know, you're having seniors coming out, well-being is, you know, you know, it's increasing, you know, all of these.
There is, you know, yeah, there's a lot of unknowns.
I don't even know where they would, if you're doing them, yeah, that's kind of the. We don't have a senior center.
A lot of unknowns.
So.
What are your thoughts around that same, in that same area of lines on. Parmally, as requested. The Parmally is one of these folks that we have typically, I think, given, uh, ten thousand dollars. Um, we, the town has been given ten thousand, they have a fund of their own.
There is some historical data that is not that you provided, um.
It's somewhere, it hovers around sixty.
It, uh, it, so in the last year. Last year, it was around seventy, it's decreased down to about sixty, it's grown to, it grew to that peak. Over the previous ten years, I wanna say as a rough estimate.
Hope you like that.
Um.
So, for whatever reason, in the operating.
But I also wanna separate out the operating from, from that, simply because, um. That fund has largely gone through donations and. Um, other things of that nature. Um, the operating budget covers, you know, like fuel costs, maintenance parts for the equipment that's there. But I, I get the point that you're making.
Just saying, I didn't really see it. We've given them ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I just wanna.
Need for whatever reason, for another nine hundred. Ten percent increase of that, I just keep it flat.
I, 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 I wanna be, you know, kind of realistic in the sense that, you know, I, I mean, I, I know, like, you know. Town owns that, you know, so certainly, you know, we would have an obligation, you know, for Parmally, but. On, on the same token, I know we're kind of making some challenging financial, like, investments, so like, one thing that I would have liked to know. It's, you know, so I, I, I think in their request, I, I think some funds was for a patio, some sort of patio.
That was capital.
Um.
Capital.
Okay, okay.
A trail.
And like, you know, and like the, the trail, you know, I, I, I mean, one, one thing that like I would be curious to know, is it, is it an essential, like, is it a safety thing? You know, cause if it's a safety, you know, issue, then I think the priority is there, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, I. I'm not necessarily sure what the right answer is, you know, but I wonder, you know, given that, you know, now we're looking at another full-time position for. You know, Public Works, you know, like, do we have to look at these kind of in a more critical light, you know, maybe just this year because of this investment that we have to make in these kind of other areas?
That's exactly how I'm looking, like, those types of investments, and I'm not losing track of, uh. I know it's different, but there's sort of a major capital, right, investment of a billion-dollar fire truck.
Yeah.
Is also. Right, I don't think we can lose track of that, so we're sort of making these really typical decisions on Public Works, Public Safety.
Right. Cause I think, you know, that's certainly where the.
And we kind of wants, and those are great, and I, I got nothing against Parmi, I, I love Parmi.
Yeah.
But is this the year that we can kind of, kind of give these wants when we're spending billion dollars on this, we're investing in a public works, we're making really difficult decisions.
You know, cause with all of this now, like, you know, we're looking at it, so almost what we're gonna hand to the Board of Finance, you know, is gonna be like a seven.
Yeah, it's gonna be close.
It's about a seven percent increase, I think, if you. If you do the math, and actually, it might be close to like eight, simply because, uh, the small budget, and that's out of our hands, so. Um.
Yeah.
I would say. That. Eight percent puts us at the higher end from what I've seen from other towns in the area. I would have to do digger de- deeper digging. Um, as to the historicals, as to whether they have seen greater percentage increases. In recent years where we kept, so whether, you know, it's a matter of just timing on our part, but, um.
What, you know, one question that, that, you know, is, you know, a- a- and again, like, so, you know, I, I'm kind of admitting, you know, that given this request, you know, for. Public Works, you know, so that investment that's gonna be made, you know, again, I, I, I'm, I, I kind of wanna look at, you know, you know, ten thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars, you know, I mean, it's something that could be. So, you know, i- i- again, so I'm kind of, Gina, I have a question for you, Gina, if you can hear me. I was just kind of curious, you know, what is, how does Board of Finance digest this, you know, what, what has been the trend?
They, they essentially do the same thing that you are doing, they'll go through and, um, you know. And there, there are occasions where they would add, and there are occasions where they take away.
I see. I see, you know, cause if we give them something like seven and a half percent, you know, would they trim? You know, like, how much would they trim?
First of all, let me point out, I think on the, all the budgets I give you, I've hidden the Board of Finance adjustment column, just so I can have the font be a little bit bigger, so.
Got it.
But there'll be a, an exposed column where they'll make their adjustments.
Sure, okay, okay.
And they might do it line by line, so, uh. If you're asking an actor to get, whether you limit them to seven percent and they, you know, shift it around, I, that, historically, they haven't done that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, it's a constant, so. So, where are you on that adjustment?
Um.
Kind of a broad question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, do you guys wanna start from? The top and go down, how do you, through the process, what do you wanna do?
Are, are you looking to make like further, just nibbles?
I, 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 I mean, I think.
I guess my kind of question is, are we? Are we trying to hit a number for the sake of hitting a number versus do we think that this is? What the costs are and. The number is what it is, because if we're just, and this is a problem that I kind of had when with Port of Ed sometimes, was. Are we just trying to make cuts because it makes us feel good making the cuts? Or are we actually? Are we actually looking at and assessing needs and? The challenges that are facing the community because.
Cuz I I think if it's a need, you know, certainly it's, we have to take that bite, you know, but on the other hand, I'm always like. What are we gonna present to the townspeople, you know, it's like, what are they gonna digest?
I understand, and but that's also, that's a big reason of why I'm asking this question is because. If we are comfortable with it being the needs. Then that's how we need to present it, or I need to present it to the town because. Ultimately, we have to be comfortable with the choices we make and personally. I'm never comfortable just trimming things for the sake of trimming things. Like, it's, it just feels wrong in a way because. I'm not sure if it's being honest with myself, like if I estimate that it costs X amount to do something. That's an honest estimate, it may be that, you know, that estimate is wrong, but that's not, you know, a matter of. That's not a matter of, you know, my assessment of that need being wrong, it could just be, you know. I'll use the example from last year of the, uh. The Lucas aid systems for, uh, defibrillators for the ambulance association and fire company. Where they had an honest assessment of what they thought the costs were, it just became more expensive because of. Whatever pressures there were in the market, um. And, you know. It's not a matter of really being deceitful, i- it's it's a matter of just like, it costs government.
It's.
Running, running a government cost thing, and you know, we. We all are cramped by what.
Yeah.
Inflation has done, we're all cramped by, you know, changes in the market, oil, gas prices, what have you.
Yeah, I I based all of those, and I can go through them again, sort of whatever my amendment or recommendations purely based on what I thought were the needs.
Yeah.
Right, and what I thought were appropriate things that maybe we could put off in a fair way because. Uh, we are looking at major investments and you're talking back into one of them, which is one F T for the highway, but originally I was like, okay, let the. Form and figure that out, but everything I presented, that is what I feel is an appropriate budget to put forth, right? Without the trooper, one F D, the Committee on Aging versus management.
Yeah, I think those were the big.
Year of pieces. Just they can have a flat ten thousand and still make Parmally a great place.
Yeah.
For what they're doing, um. Um, I think two point eight increase for salaries is okay, but in this day and market.
Yeah.
Um, the capital reductions, right, um, because we're looking at a. A a major investigates, um, and.
Upper eighty fifty one.
Right?
Yeah.
And that's a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, again, take that, how do we get that and focus on, you know. And public works and be able to invest in public work, be able to invest in sort of large town. Uh, public projects, public safety projects in a reasonable way, so this Parmally need. Twenty twenty five thousand dollars for their pavilion expansion, maybe that's not the year to do that for. Parmally, or they can, if they want to spend some of their, their sixty thousand dollars they have. Um. Those were my. What I thought were reasonable, fair adjustments, right, I did. Like, is this the year since, by the by the truck, is this the year that we need?
Correct.
A rescue boat.
Sure.
You know, how many. Ice rescues have we needed to borrow a boat for? I think we talked about the assessor, was the one thing, or, um, the building official. Putting then lumping then with a two point eight with everyone else, I think that's fair.
That is it.
Um. And seeing what that budget. Where that lands.
Yeah.
I still think it's gonna land at a. Something I'm not sure that the community is gonna support, to be quite honest, because it's also, you can say what you want, but the community also has to support.
Yeah, exactly, so it's always that balance.
Yeah.
You know, because you're you're absolutely right, like I just don't want to go to cut for the sake of cutting.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you know, because. I- i- if there's an investment to be made, if we have to spend the money, then it has to be spent. Uh, but again, it's always kind of like that.
I know, I I I understand where you're coming from, but like. There's the balance between are you being judicious and are you being arbitrary?
Sure.
And that's kind of where. You know, we can be judicious on, you know, what the salary increases are, what's, oh, what, uh, investments we're making in. But then when you've done all that and you're like, well, I really want to get down to that six percent. Whereas I think that's, to use your terms from the Board of Ed, that's the magic number that the community is gonna. Be acceptable of, that kind of gets me in the position of, well. We just assessed the needs and now we're saying, well, we're gonna cut a little bit off the top there and we'll figure it out and that.
I I I'm trying to remember too, in 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 last year's budget, when we got the. When the school was shifting their health insurance plan. So the town got like a bulk of money, I think it was around like a million bucks, was that incorporated into last year's budget? Gina?
Oh, blur, it's gone, I know that much, um, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, Annie might know, uh, she's she's listening in.
Um.
So.
So that was probably also a mechanism that helped to offset that percentage increase, and now we're kind of facing that. We don't have that now.
I don't know.
Right.
So to that question.
Yeah, I mean, the when they set the mill rate, we we the town agreed to let, to use. The Board of Finance proposed using one point four million dollars of the fund balance, so that. That if if things come in the way we predicted, I think they're gonna be better, so we won't need it all, but, uh, that, um. That helped cover the, um.
The shortfall, so I just think.
Got it.
And we need, well, not need, but actuarial, right, you sort of want to keep.
Two months.
Yeah, some sort of, you know, which we're, which we're there right now, um. I do want to remind us, even with our capital, we're.
Yeah, we cut thin.
We're a million dollars over capital.
Yeah.
So.
Which is gonna require some sort of financing.
Something.
Uh, yeah, that, and let's all remind ourselves again. I don't want to, I don't like the idea of kicking the can, but this is properly in the realm of the Board of Finance, so. I'm willing to kick the football over to them on that aspect and work with them on. Dribbling it down the court, I think I've mixed my metaphors here, cuz you don't kick.
So on Mon, I guess I'm just trying to, like, on process wise, on Monday. Remember our next, right?
Monday.
Another meeting.
The eleventh.
Do you like to present the budget? That's just everything that we just spoke about.
Sure. Present a budget.
That and.
Yeah, and then yeah.
Read to that.
Will you be here for Monday's meeting?
I might be a little jet lagged, but all, okay.
And then we can endorse that, you know, with those sort of everything that we talked about here.
Yes, I have. Copy or you, yeah, you'll have a copy of that by.
Okay.
That'd be great.
I'll say Friday because that gives us.
If anybody needs a special meeting after that, even if it's online or something.
Well, we won't have the time to do a special meeting unless we call it. We'd have to call it Monday to.
Yeah.
Have it in time for the, uh, like, the for Board of Finance, which meets Tuesday, so, um.
Eric, typically you also want the board to see your narrative too.
Yes, and so I will write up that narrative.
Okay, yeah, if the budget sort of reflects the things that we just spoke about here, right, with those amendments, I would be, I would be comfortable.
Okay.
Say that, yeah.
All right, yeah. Yeah, okay. Real happy, I I don't want to use, well, happy is the wrong word to use, are we comfortable with where we are at at this point in time?
I I I think we've kind of identified what the priorities are.
Yeah.
Um, you know, in lieu of going line by line, I think we kind of already expressed and discussed like where. The emphasis should be, maybe at places that we can reduce, you know, places that we can reduce. Um, but certainly where I am at this point in time, you know, is one of these things, I like, I think we're just, we're meeting that cliff now.
It's the.
You know, of like.
Nerves before the race.
You know, it's kind of like, where is it going now, but e- even in terms of like our 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 budget, you know, for for this, you know, twenty four, twenty five. You know, I think there are just things now that we're encountering that in prior administrations, they kind of had little. I don't want to say there were cheat codes, you know, that were used, but I think now we're kind of coming up to a point where now we're facing all of that.
It's kind of like what we've been talking about, not creating those cliffs in the future, I don't want to say that we're at a cliff, but you know.
I understand.
We're at an incline, shall we say, and it's kind of incumbent on us to. In these good stores, not dig ourselves, so. Know what the metaphor is doing at this point, so you get what I'm saying.
I do, I do.
All right, in that case, um.
All right.
We're all comfortable, I'll get us adjourned early.
Cool.
At six forty one.
All right, yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Yep, I'm in one Gina's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.